All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. In the absence of a chair and a vice-chair today, we are going to hold an election for a chair for the meeting. Until that time, I'll serve as representing the Planning Commission Secretary. I'll serve as Chair Pro Tem. We do have a quorum, so we are calling the meeting to order, and we have made a determination that we have a quorum for this meeting. So the first order of business will be to elect a chair for this meeting. Is there a motion to nominate someone for chair for this meeting?
I'll nominate Warren Russell for the chair for this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Mr. Warren Russell will act as chair for this meeting, and I will yield the floor to Mr. Russell.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order, and we will ask for our approval of the previous meeting minutes for January the 22nd, Planning Commission meeting.
I think that's January 12th.
Or January 12th.
Chair.
Twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded, and we all, excuse me. We'll go ahead and hold the vote. For all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we will have the consent agenda, and since we don't have to read the consent agenda, we'll entertain a motion for that. Are there any items on the consent agenda that needs to be removed? If not, we'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. May we, wow.
All in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're doing great, Warren.
Motion carries. All right. Now we will go to the GDO. The first item on the agenda is Item A. It is North Church LLC, second re-subdivision of Lot 2, final plat for Lot 1 on 30 acres, 30.8 acres, Zone RS-15, MU GDO-1 and GDO-2 located along Robert Rose Drive, Willow Oak Trail, and Wilkerson Pike. Wilkerson Pike Drainage Association developer. Margaret Ann Green is the planner. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our first item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider approving a final plat for the re-subdivision of North Church LLC. This is for Lot 2, and the property is located within our Gateway Design Overlay District 1 and 2. It's zoned RS-15, that single-family residential district, and MU mixed-use district. The property, the proposal to do a plat was made at the request of the Assistant Planning Director, who did reach out to the owner of the property to ask for them to combine a couple remnant parcels into one lot of record, so that the ownership is clear and that the reserve for future development could be removed as this is a common area and open space for existing development within the area. The plat is in good order. They've been able to address all staff comments, so we would recommend that you approve it, subject to all staff comments.
Do you have anything from the developer?
No, they don't have anything. This is a fairly simple.
So it has been heard. Are there any comments from the Planning Commission?
No comments.
No comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me. Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to Item B. Item B is the Avenue Plaza redesigned, initial design review for Lot 1 on 97.5 acres, CH, GDO-1, and PSO located along Medical Center Parkway, Big V developer. Margaret Ann Green is the planner.
Thank you again. This is initial design review for some redevelopment of the former open space located within the Avenue's Lifestyle Center along Medical Center Parkway. The existing proposed uses within the center are allowed by Riot in the CH District as Commercial Highway District and with the GDO-1. This project is also zoned PSO, Planned Signage Overlay District. The area that you're considering today is located in the area that I've got pulled up on the screen. You're probably familiar with it, since I know you've all spent some time shopping in this area. It's in the center of four access lanes. The property owners proposes to redesign the center of the development to create an outdoor space as a pedestrian destination and a gathering space. Those of you who have been here as long as I have may remember that nearby there used to be an outdoor plaza with fountains that were initially a part of the Lifestyle Center, which was a place where people would spend time and gather. Those were removed with the Victoria's Secret expansion, and the H&amp;M addition, which is just further down the private drive, had some formal open space which was removed. So we've been expecting and anticipating some compensatory space created. This shopping center isn't just a typical mall or outdoor mall. It's really envisioned to be a lifestyle center, so not just a place you shop, that you might come to see Santa or the Grinch, or you may come for yoga or book readings. And so staff has been expecting, and the developers have made a commitment to come back and make some more meaningful spaces where people can gather. So what is being proposed today is reworking the center of the space. There are the covered walkways, and I'm going to just use them here in this area with the roses on either side, so you may recollect that's where that is. This is an area that you can drive around. As proposed, they're going to close off that access. We did hear from our fire department that they wanted to make sure that, since they currently can go like this, that they can still maneuver the site. Mr. Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith prepared a truck turn simulation, which essentially has the fire trucks going around, and so they can speak to that if you have any questions. But that, as far as access, was, I think, our major concern with the reworking of it. The proposed improvements will be an enhancement to the site, and there are several sheets that you've got, and you can see the work here on the screen. They're proposing some artificial turf, and so I did ask for a physical sample of that, because it can be done really cheaply and look awful, or it can be done well. And so I have, for a few weeks now, entertained many people in my office with a sample, but now I'd like the opportunity to entertain you, and I'll pass it around for you to look at. I did show it to Mr. Barbie, who our whole department relies on for advice in good design when it comes to landscaping, and showed it to him, and he believes that this is a quality artificial turf, as far as artificial turf goes, and that he thinks it'll probably hold up well. And the fact that they included thatch in there, I suppose, is something that helps it look more realistic. The proposed improvements in this area include, like, a shade structure on the plan that's showing up as red, but you'll see that they're calling out it's actually that color, so it's more of a neutral color. There are decorative containers, which are about two feet tall. There's some interesting seating, which I think is neat and kind of fits in with, helps frame the space, and then there's some just regular tables and chairs proposed within the site. Some of our comments were initially, we were concerned with, people are used to driving straight through, so we wanted clear, physical boundaries, something that really speaks to you and says you can't keep driving straight anymore. Initially, they were proposing bollards. We've had bollard discussions in the past with daycare and gas stations and the overuse of them, so they've cut back on the use of the bollards. If you look on the plan now, they're located here and here, and we really wanted where the drive aisle lines up, so that site to have something there. So they're proposing those two-foot planters, and so we would just ask you, is that sufficient for creating that boundary that we're looking at? I think the fact that they've reduced the boundary, or the bollards, is an improvement. I think Mr. Gunther will come up to explain how they intend to use the space. I think that's important to you as well. If you have any questions about the plan, I'd be glad to answer them. If you do make approval today, we would recommend that you make them, subject to all staff comments.
One quick question. Will there be any, I don't like to think of the look of this, but I'm concerned with, you know, people driving straight into that as well. Will there be any signage listed that says, obviously, right turn only, or anything?
New traffic pattern?
Anything that prevents them from pulling forward, other than the seating?
There, I don't see any additional signage on the plan, but we can ask them to add. It probably would need to be somewhere over in this area, where it kind of alerts you ahead of time. And those planters, I believe, are not concrete, they're terracotta, so it may be that you want some kind of material that's a little bit more substantial. But we certainly, it's not atypical to ask for additional signage.
Margaret Ann, can I clarify something? So bottom, bottom of the screen here, that's Victoria's Secret, Pandora, all the things, right? And then these are the old two walkways.
Yep.
Yes. These are the walkways that exist and are going to stay.
Right. And so now we're knocking out all of that and making a little park kind of inside of that.
Yeah, surrounded by the parking and drive aisle.
So what about, because I love it, I love the idea of it, you know, I've been here since before the avenue was built, but that is such a congested area. Is this going to be somewhere where kids are going to be highly attracted to, and they might run out, it might encourage them to run out in this street? Because if I recall, there's kind of like inclines, don't you kind of go up a bump and back down, and there's so much traffic?
Yeah, the treatment pattern on the asphalt was, so that there was a physical change, so hopefully, not only was it just the visual change, but it's a physical change to slow you down. Absolutely, there will be children here, and we asked them, I think Scott Grabey developed the fountains, and he has the really cool space that's in the middle of some drive aisles, and it has the fountains and ice skating rink and all kinds of fun things to do. He actually had to change his fence type from the decorative that he had originally, because my four- and seven-year-old absolutely would run through the fence, and so they could squeeze right through those spaces that you can't imagine people squeezing through. And so when we talked to them, we asked them to look at that and learn from Mr. Grabey and what he's learned about having a destination space, which this would be a destination space in an area that also has quite a bit of vehicle traffic.
Okay.
So just for my clarification, for the same children thing, the drive aisles are still going to go left or right, above and below, correct?
Yeah, they're still.
So there's no more perpendicular, they're just running parallel? Okay, yeah. Does planning think this will help with traffic calming in that area at all, or hinder it?
I think that the traffic here, traffic calming is generally slowing it down, and so we think it's probably a calm area, it's just congested area. We would say it's probably more congested than it is high-speed traffic. And so certainly, I think they need to get back to creating space for people to come to, but as far as this being underutilized, I think it was a bit odd having two drive aisles parallel. It can be a bit confusing having them side by side as they are now. I don't know that, I mean, we didn't handpick this as the place. They came to us and asked for this, they think it's a good place due to its location of, I think their office and other side amenities.
Can I ask one more question? Would it not be easier to push this all the way down and loose the drive aisle on the bottom and have two drive aisles, like, on the middle of the parking and on the top? That way you don't have to have that risk of children running, go, I'm still concerned, but I've got a four-year-old, and if my four-year-old saw something fun in that middle section, and he was, let's say, down here by the cookie shop.
Right.
Gone.
So Sean, you're saying, instead of an island, push it down?
I mean, take, like, that.
Yeah, and then maybe line up the two drive aisles further up, because I'm like Jamie with children. I mean, you could probably drive out there right now, and there's probably a significant amount of cars driving around that island right now, and Chase, you've got small children too.
My question would be, do they propose any type of play area, or is it basically just sitting area, picnic tables?
So it's certainly going to have a destination with all age types. They're going to, there's a, I think there's the opportunity to have music, and there's events, and Santa, and...
Yeah, Santa's okay.
Yes.
Knox is gone.
Gone.
He's taken off. I mean, don't get me wrong, I think that area needs work. I like the concept of it a lot. My concern is making it more attractive to children and to young kids.
Maybe less attractive to children.
Well, I'm saying, in its current state, making it more attractive now might be dangerous. But I do think it needs some reworking, so I don't know, those are my thoughts. I'm out loud.
And we can invite their team and see if they've got any information that I may have not shared with you or not aware of, if they can add anything to our conversation.
What is the, okay, you see these, like, sideways lines with the dots in between in your fancy?
These guys? Yeah.
Yeah, what does that mean?
It's the type of pavement. It's that raised stamped, I think, stamped, colored, and raised crosswalk. Let me go back to the picture.
That's currently there?
Oh, yeah, it's proposed, so it would be, let me get rid of my thoughts. So this would be closing off.
Right.
Here, and so it would be added there and there. You can see that there's a change, the color, it's hard to tell here, but you can see that there's a change in color from this area to this area, and this is where it rises. There's concrete there, there's concrete on either side where it kind of comes up. I think that's a dark, dark stamped.
It is, so it would be the same material?
Yeah, they're not proposing to change this.
Okay.
They are proposing to change this area and this area.
I might be interested to hear about alternatives to doing something more raised and bumpy there, that's more intentional about slowing cars and saying, hey, pay attention in case a kid walks out in front of you.
They initially said they wanted that space for food trucks to be able to pull out, and so if you can see, kind of, there's a, this is where you can drop people off anyway, but wanting the bollards so that you can drive into the space if they need to, and also have food trucks on the side of the...
Yeah, I think you could still drive on it, just something almost like you'd find in a school zone or a neighborhood or something like that. I mean, I want a Lamborghini, but here we go.
I know we're no Florence, Italy, but when I went, they've had those bollards that can come up and down, and so they can restrict traffic at certain times of the day. Theirs were automated, I think you can do them manually as well, so their bollards can be placed here if there are events, that you can have them come up, and when there's no events, you can remove them.
How would that affect emergency traffic?
We would want to not have you approve it today, but talk to them first if you wanted some sort of change, because I wouldn't want to speak on their behalf.
Okay. Yeah, I'm thinking less so during events and just everyday traffic, making that ground there something more intentional. Because, I mean, I drive around the avenue all the time, and everyone's on their phone, they're looking for a parking spot, and I just would be devastated if a little kid ran out. And I don't even have kids, all I shall speak on that.
Chase doesn't want his run over either.
No, I can imagine.
The more and more I look at this, I'm just starting to wonder, who wants to hang out in the middle of a parking lot?
But no, I think it's a good improvement over what is currently there, which is this waste of space. I do think it's a good improvement, it just, you're right, it's a lot for that space. I'm not going to sit there.
I think we should listen to the team.
Yeah. Sorry, Margaret Ann. We love you.
I appreciate feedback.
We should have coordinated better today, though, for a little off.
So any comments from the developer? Is the developer here to talk to us?
Yes, Mr. Gunther is here.
Hi, Mr. Gunther.
He's the representative.
Can we access these images? Let's see. All right.
So back and forward is how I do it?
Yeah, thank you.
Just state your name and company.
Good afternoon. Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith. Pleasure to be here. We also have some representatives from Big V that can add to the discussion if needed. We appreciate working with staff and with, you know, really, this has been a design effort that's included city as well as our landscape architects and engineers and transportation engineers, so we've been thinking about this space for a while. I think the one thing we want to really highlight is there's a space out there now. There's pedestrian ways that are through that space now, and there's really four lanes of traffic that aren't needed. There's like four travel lanes that aren't needed. What we're trying to do is really take that space and enhance it, and enhance the opportunities that are there now. So it's not like we're completely changing the dynamics of the space. What we're trying to do is enhance it and improve it, if that makes sense. We did have traffic engineers look very carefully about the traffic patterns and about emergency egress. I think that's been shown, there's plenty of opportunities for the traffic and emergency access to continue. I think part of what will happen, if you can picture the idea of traffic calming, when you come to this space and you see these vertical elements, when you kind of see the images that are on the screen there, you know, this is going to be clearly a space that is not automobile-oriented. It becomes a space that's, you know, for leisure, for public interaction, for pedestrians. So I think that's going to be a big part of what changes the way the space is perceived and used. How you design a space has a lot of effect in how it's used and managed, and I think the redesign of this will, you know, have a big play in that. So as to, if you look at what's there now, that plaza that's in front of Victoria's Secret and Bath &amp; Body Works and the jewelry, Pandora Jewelry, the idea is that that plaza and our public open space during certain events, when you have a more of an event or an occurrence where you're gathering a large number of people there, that could be closed. You could pull food trucks up, you could have some kind of site furnishings, you might even put chairs out in that space. When you want to have an event where there's a large number of people using the space, we want to make it flexible. We want to make it more dynamic. So that is a possibility of just closing that lane, if you will, this lane right here, you know, during those events. I think that the change in materials, the addition of, as I said, the vertical elements, everything there is going to start to speak that this is a pedestrian space. It will cause people to pay attention, it will cause people to realize that there's, you know, these crosswalks are there now, these pergolas are there now, so you're already inviting people to pass through the space. What we want to do is make it even clearer that this is, you know, a place where people will have an opportunity for pedestrians. The challenge with taking this area and completely closing it off is that that, there's some dynamics with the current tenants and with Big V and how that is set up and with our circulation. It would be a challenge to just push that plaza down completely and close that off. So I appreciate that idea. It is something we could perhaps explore more, but I can tell you that it is a lot more challenging than the design we have in front of you. We think that with the right type of barriers, if you did have, like I said, public events that are connecting these spaces, and people would be in attendance, when I say that, Big V would have somebody there controlling the use of that space, monitoring, you know, that those bollards stay up and that there's a high-level activity that's being controlled. I think that we want, you know, we want this to be that kind of public space that has the ability for people to really walk through it and stay there in leisure, if you will, but at the same time, it's that challenge of making sure that cars can move around it, slow down, and still acknowledge it when needed. You know, the plant palette itself, I think, is going to change a lot of perception of that space. We're going to add a lot of plant material, we're going to save those trees, those vertical shade elements will all speak more to a pedestrian space. And as you can see from the site furnishing, we want it to be kind of flexible, we want it to be used for, it's really more of a modern urban context where it's going to be used both for seating but social gathering as well. So that's kind of our initial reasoning for the design of this. We think it has a lot of merit, we're open to further discussion. I know that obviously Big V is also very concerned about safety, and they thought a lot about safety in this space, so it's not something that's been ignored. I think we're happy to continue discussions about how to make it work.
Thank you. I think one of the things, at least, I'm looking at from the drive aisles that are coming into the space from the top, is right now you have planters in front of the drive aisles.
Right.
You can put, and then in the middle, which is not a drive aisle, it looks like you have permanent barriers. Is that right?
Well, these, right, so these are the planters.
Right.
Correct, and then these are the bollards. Those are permanent, those wouldn't be temporary. It would all be a permanent structure, but it allows for pedestrians, you know, to get through that space.
The only thing I'm looking at is if there were some type of incident where somebody stepped on the gas, those plants are not going to stop the car, but if we had plants and bollards, it may be more safe.
We could all, yeah, that is one possibility. We could also look at making those planters a concrete structure, where it's literally like a...
I like that.
Something more substantial than just...
Right. Yeah, I think that's very doable, making those planters a concrete structure.
I think seeing this version helped me out a lot. It looks great. You know, I don't have that big of a concern as far as, like, the children portion goes about running out, because to me, there's nothing there that really attracts a child, so I don't, and you're already dealing with the traffic and are walking, using those walkways now, so I just don't, I don't see that anymore, for me personally.
I don't know, I still see it. I mean, I know those are crosswalks, I know, I use those crosswalks all the time, but using a crosswalk to cross a street is one thing, inviting people to hang out in a very busy intersection is a different thing. So it's not just an egress and ingress thing, it's like a, hey, stay in this middle of the road and hang out for a while.
That's my biggest thing. The current medium is just like grass and trees. I've never once seen anybody standing there. And now it's like an invitation to hang out in the middle of the intersection, and I know this, I'm looking for any excuse to sit in my car somewhere else when my wife is shopping, so I would be the one that would be sitting in the middle of this, and if my kid walked out of the store with her, he would dart to me immediately, so...
Yeah, I would need to see some pretty serious ways to keep cars going like one mile per hour over this area. And then it's going to slow traffic. And I will also say, I mean, I'm going to be real bold today, and say the landscaping at the avenue in its current state is lacking and very poorly maintained. I have serious concerns about inviting more greenery into a concrete place and it not being maintained well, so, which is usually the opposite of my concern, but...
That's understood. One of the things that Big V is doing is revamp, they're looking at revamping that landscape, so we have, it's been an administrative review, because it was just an updated landscape plan, but we're looking at enhancing all the existing landscape out there, because they've understood that was something that really needed more attention, and so now with their new management looking at it, they want to really step up the landscape.
Okay.
They understand that's part of the, yes?
I'm Lauren Boland with the Avenue. So what the current plan is, and I've been there since they built the center, so I'm original to the property, and all the landscaping is at its point where we want to redevelop everything, and so that's why we brought in Reagan Smith to redevelop, and we have just these beautiful renderings of what we're going to do, taking materials out that don't work, that aren't thriving, putting in things that thrive, that are drought-resistant, attract pollinators, create butterfly waste stations, little pockets of just fun things to add to the center. So that is definitely something that we've done and budgeted. We're just waiting, we wanted to do this first, and then the area that, so think of Bar Louie and Barnes &amp; Noble, everywhere from there back will be, so when we do this, that will be, that section of landscaping will be totally redone at the same time. And then the next part is the wings out, where think Bed Bath &amp; Beyond Forever 21 into this plaza area, and then Belk into the plaza area. So we are just systematically working to replace everything, so. But yes, that's it, and I have young children as well, and so with the design and of these elements of the seating, we had that in mind, and so it's kind of, if you can see, it kind of creates barriers with the seating. It's kind of calculated that way to, so that, so that these, like, that rust color up at top, so it just kind of creates some interior barriers as well. And so one thing that we've done from day one is, through Cousins, Heinz ownership, is... had security. So we have extra security for every single event that we have, so we bring somebody in and we have people dedicated. So anytime we've done an event, like we've got the Christmas tree, we've had it three years, anytime we do that and we close off those areas, we have security guards there, we have lit batons, we have additional partitions with, not partitions, it's, they're pretty concrete, or, I'm sorry, construction barriers with reflection on them, and we have literally a person standing there in front of that. So we would continue to dedicate and allocate staff for that very reason, because again, we are all, you know, parents and, you know, anything could happen, so...
I'm less worried about special events than I am just every day.
Every day, yeah.
Y'all do handle special events very well, and there's people that are, but when we're talking about every single day, just normal shopping?
Yeah.
There's nobody, I mean, you're inviting people into the middle of an intersection. That's where my problem is coming in.
Yeah, and it's, we're just trying to, you know, like what Kevin was saying, just that urban, you know, just, and what Margaret Ann was saying with the fountain, so it's kind of central, because we, it's called Central Park, and so it is central to the center, and what the complaints that we've had from people are, this intersection is confusing, why can't, we can't go out there, we can't do anything. So that's exactly right, to get out there and to, it's just not accessible right now. And so we have people that, employees that want to take lunches, we have the art, large office component in building 1500 by Belk, where people say, you know, they want a place to sit down. And we have the benches, but this is, this is the little pocket of park that we just really want to develop and be able to give back to the community. We partnered with Black Men, Stewart's Creek, to do like music series and caroling, so I mean, it's, there's a lot of thing, we have a lot of great ideas for this, so, but just wanted to let you know that the landscaping is underway, so.
Would it be as simple as putting a stop sign there on both sides?
Can we defer this and have you come back with some responses to that, that lane closest to the buildings? And kind of think through this and bring something back up about particularly that lane?
Yeah, I mean, that's the point of the workshop, right, is to brainstorm these ideas.
Sure, yeah.
Because like I said, I'm not, I don't think any of us are necessarily worried about special events, it's just the everyday shopping event. And the last thing any of us want is some small kid to get hit by a car because somebody's texting while driving, driving through that thing looking for a parking spot.
Uh huh. Right, right. So we do have kids, you know, we have that public area where the fountain used to be, so that's just turned into a play area, and we have the seat walls there. So we are inviting people from the opposite side of the center now to come to that way, but I totally see what you're talking about, but, you know, we've, those, the pavers, they're, like what you were saying, they are elevated, so it does give a sense of separation there. So we could definitely look into raising those or making a change there.
I think what I'm hearing is we can look at, we realize that lane needs to stay open, we realize people are passing through the space now, but how do we alert people more to this change? And I think that signage is certainly one thing, you know, we could look at a raised rock there that's even further elevated, and maybe some striping, maybe some pavement patterns that alert you before you get there that are loud and clear. I think those kind of things are doable. Shifting the whole park down, I think, would be, quite honestly, a real challenge. I don't know that we could make that kind of change, but...
That would be difficult for the specific tenants in that area and the deals that they have, so...
And we're really, you know, if you think about pocket parks in an urban setting, this happens all the time. I think the challenge is people starting to think of that stretch of the avenue as more as an urban, you know, pedestrian-oriented space, not just a suburban parking lot. And we're trying to achieve that with this design, but I think what I'm hearing is, how do we further alert people that, you know, with signage and maybe some, and I think we can go back to our transportation engineers and pose this question, but some signage, some elevated walks or prior to the walk, some, you know, striping on the pavement that just say loud and clear, like you are entering a pedestrian zone.
Or maybe, and I don't know, I don't know if this is even doable, you know, when you walk and it has a sensor and you see lighting? Have you seen those in, in sort of beach?
Hawk lighting? I think the only problem is that thing would be off, it would be gone all the time, so you'd, but, I mean, to your point, though, any kind of alert, you know, even if there's a, an alert system that's a flashing light that says you're entering a pedestrian zone, you know, those kind of things, I think we can certainly explore.
Yeah, the new ownership is just really dedicated to investing into the avenue and the community and, but love the feedback, and we'll go back to the, you know, we can be happy to take the comments under consideration and see what we can come back up with, but yeah, we're hoping to really change the center with this spot.
So I do want to kind of float that idea out, make sure we're heading in the right direction. If we acknowledge that there's a need to alert people more to the pedestrian space and continue to work with staff and our transportation group on how to do that, does that still, does that feel like a viable direction forward as opposed to just saying that this space doesn't work as designed?
It does for me. I'll have to speak.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to say that yet.
I'll say that I like the concept. Yeah, absolutely. My only other concern, and Margaret Ann may want to speak on it, Brad's comments about trees growing on concrete, how's, do we have a, are these going to be actual full-grown mature trees? Is that a thing?
So the, the trees you see here, these three trees are existing, and we're working with an arborist, you know, to preserve those. If you can imagine, the space they have now is basically like that. So we're trying to make sure that there's enough root zone that are saved to preserve those trees, because we really like them, they give instant canopy, they have presence. The rest of this area, you know, we're not, we would actually be taking out asphalt. Anyplace we have additional landscape would have to have topsoil added and removal of pavement.
Okay.
But that would be something that, you know, most of these trees we're planting in now are not going to require anywhere near the root zone you see in those three trees that are out there now. But we do have to work with an arborist, and I think there's one that has worked with Peachtree, who's maintaining the site now, and we're going to, we're in contact with them to help make sure that those trees can be saved. If they can't, we'd probably need to replace them.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I would hate to see a concrete slab in a couple of years, you know, because all the trees die.
Right.
Margaret Ann, what's the process for resubmit and an initial design review?
They, so first of all, in Gateway, you do require initial design review and final design review, which is usually a two-meeting process. You sometimes combine them when there are no structures, when there's just like a site improvement. And so with this one, I put it as initial design review, because I didn't want to be presumptuous and think that you wanted to combine them, although you could do that. When it comes to making a decision, you can, of course, approve it subject to staff comments, that's a conditional approval, or you can deny it and state your reasons for denying it, and then, or you can defer it, but if you defer it, you have a timeframe for how long you can defer that. You have to bring it back up within a certain timeframe, of course, then you could deny or approve it. If the applicants ask for a deferral, there's no timeframe for when they come back, but if you defer it, then you have so much time, and I'm checking my phone, it's kind of a bit out of character, but I was texting Matthew to see if he knew what the next time or next day would be if you guys decided to defer it. So I would say, I would ask them, the applicants, if they would rather defer it and get that information and have the flexibility to get the information whenever they have it available. If they would rather not, then you would make the decision whether you want to approve, approve conditionally, deny for stated reasons, or defer within a certain timeframe.
So I think the question is, is would you like to defer? I know you'd like it to move forward, but...
You're right. I think, you know, so that was part of what my inquiry was, I was trying to get a sense, do we feel like, we know we have to come back for that final, do we feel like we're at a place where we can say, okay, we need to address those traffic issues and get some solutions to that, but the overall concept is solid. And, you know, I think we're, we want to make sure everybody's comfortable, I think we're open to that deferral, if it's something that we need a little more digestion of how we solve it. We know we have to come back and do the final, it'd be our preference to keep moving. So I'm going to put that out there as that's the ideal path for us. If you all feel like you don't have enough yet to go there, we're okay with deferring it. Did that answer your question in a roundabout way?
It did. I think, I think you have two commissioners who probably would rather you defer it, and two that would, the plan would be okay, so I think you're better off deferring it.
Okay, well, that's okay. We're okay with deferring the plan at this stage and continuing to work on the traffic issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Plats and Plans.
Yes, sir. Mr. Russell, we will need a motion from the Planning Commission to defer action.
Even if he's...
Even if he's...
He deferred?
Yes.
We're accepting their deferment, I guess?
Well, it would just be a motion to defer action on the item.
Motion to defer action.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion moves forward.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move on to Plats and Plans. The first one will be item A, Waits Creek Crossing, Section 6, Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Platt for 43 lots on 10.9 acres, Zone RS6, located along Asher's Fork Drive, O'Brien Lord Venture Development, and Brad Barbie is the planner.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. This is the Master Plan Amendment and Preliminary Platt for Section 6 of Waits Creek Crossing. This property is located, let's see if we can scroll down, approximately three-quarters of a mile west of Roald Outreach Church along New Salem Highway. The property is Zoned RS6, and the surrounding property to the east is Residential County RM, to the south is also residential, property to the west and also to the north is Zoned Commercial. The plat that you have before you has been revised since the initial submittal or since the resubmittal, and was updated to show a better alignment of the, it's going to be the Westernmost Drive, where it aligns with an alleyway, so that it's more of a straight crossing instead of causing a congested point there at the intersection. So just be aware that the updated plat is different from what you have in front of you today.
Mr. Barbie, if you wouldn't mind scrolling to the, to the plant. Thank you.
There we go. It's this, yeah? Obviously don't know how that portion works, but it's the, like I said, that Easternmost Drive is now moved somewhat to the west to better align with the alleyway. The movement to the master plan was to actually add this section to the existing Waits Creek Crossing master plan, as well as the modification to the street network that I discussed previously. The amendment, the amendment and preliminary plat are in generally good order, and we would ask that any approval be made subject to all staff comments.
Are there any comments from the developer? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Or any comments from the Planning Commission?
No.
I guess I have one comment. You said to realign to the alleyway?
Right.
Yeah, but how does that affect the lots? If you look...
Some of the lots, as far as square footages, they all meet the standard for the RS6 zoning district. As you can imagine, some of the lines, the lots are a little bit longer or a little bit deeper than what they're shown on this plat, but they still all meet that RS6 standard.
They still all meet it, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item, item B, has been withdrawn from the ledger from the applicant. We will move on to item C, West Lawn Commercial East, Preliminary Platt for seven lots on 23.3 acres, Zone PUD, located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Oshka Properties LLC, developer, and Joel Aguilera is the planner.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Today's item that I bring for you today is the West Lawn Commercial East Preliminary Platt. This is located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road, just south of I-840. This preliminary plat shows seven commercial lots and the proposed easements in the right-of-way, as you can see here at Paul Patel Place. The purpose for this preliminary plat was for the realignment of Blackman Road and the dedication of the new right-of-way, Paul Patel Place, which will be cul-de-sac here just before Veterans Parkway. The realignment of Blackman Road was not so much as to affect the flow, but rather to ensure that it accommodated and met the up-to-date street design standards and to make sure that it was still going to be aligned with Shores Road, and to, which will also be, continue to be a signalized intersection. Staff worked with SCC in making sure that the portion, that there is a portion, in fact, up here kind of in the north, where it will be actually encroaching in the property owned by Vanderbilt, and this is something that we'll talk about in the recommendation of approval later on. But other than that, there were no other major concerns with this preliminary plat. There were all comments seem to be addressed perfectly and that there were no other outstanding orders that needed to be addressed. After further review, staff determined that this should be approved, subject to all staff comments, including that Vanderbilt consent to the dedication and construction of right-of-way on its property, and that also that this approval of this plat be subject to the zoning application amendment sent to City Council, which will be heard January 27th of 2022. I'm available for any comments or questions.
Are there any comments from the Planning Commission? If not, we'll entertain a commotion.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
And...
Oh, and that, well, yes, and Vanderbilt granting the right-of-way, of course.
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion moves forward. We will move on to item D, West Lawn Commercial East, Final Platt for seven lots on 23.3 acres, Zone PUD, located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Oshka Properties LLC, developer, Joel Aguilera.
Thank you, Chair. Again, this is a continuation of the West Lawn Commercial East. There were no other major concerns with this final plat. We worked with SCC addressing any other comments. Since there were no other outstanding issues or concerns with this, we ask that this be approved, subject to all staff comments, and including as well that it's subject to the zoning application amendment to be heard at City Council, January 27th of 2022. I'm available for any questions.
Any comments from the Planning Commission? Not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next item, item E, has been withdrawn by the applicant. We will move on to new business and schedule public hearings. The first one is item A, Annexation Petition and Plan of Services for approximately 258.8 acres alongside Northwest Broad Street. Hoard Family applicant. Planner is Maria Rush.
Thank you very much. There we go. Good afternoon, Commission. The property owners, Elizabeth Hoard and the estate of Thomas Hoard III, collectively the Hoard family, have submitted petition to request that their property be annexed into the city of Murfreesboro. The property is approximately 258 acres in size and is located along the northeast side of Broad Street and to the east of... of Broad Street and to the east of Interstate 840. Simultaneous with this application is a request to zone the property to Commercial Highway with a GDO Gateway Design Overlay One District. There are no residential structures on this property, so it is vacant at this time. Staff is in the current preparation of the plan of services that will be presented at the public hearing. Just wanted to inform the Planning Commission that there was a neighborhood outreach meeting that was conducted last night at New Vision Church for residents in the area. The neighboring subdivisions are Riverbend and, I always forget the other one. Oakley? And Oakley subdivision, thank you. I think I heard that in the background. It was pretty well attended, and there were a lot of comments, and I'll, I'll bring those to your attention with the accompanying zoning amendment. Staff is asking that this item be scheduled for a public hearing for February the 2nd coming up next month. Thank you.
Any comments from the Planning Commission? We'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
The move.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to Item B, the zoning application. Zoning application for approximately 258, 258.8 acres located alongside Northwest Broad Street, Zoned to be CH and GDO One, simultaneous with annexation. SCC Inc., on behalf of Legacy Sports Tennessee applicant, and Maria Rush is the planner.
Thank you very much. As indicated in the last item, this is the accompanying application for the zoning of the property. The applicant is Legacy Sports. They are a youth sports facility out of Arizona, and they're proposing to establish a facility here in Tennessee. They are requesting the zoning to be on this property, CH, with a GDO dash one overlay district. Their facility that they've indicated would include indoor and outdoor facilities for youth recreation and sporting events, as well as out parcels that would contain retail, commercial, hospitality types of uses. The purpose of the Gateway Design Overlay in this particular property is to ensure the high-quality design would come forward on this bulk, bulk zoning and to help regulate the uses to be consistent with the neighboring area. The adjacent property is contiguous to the city limits. The neighboring zoning is RS15, which is a single-family residential to the north for the Oakley subdivision, RS15, to the east, Riverbend subdivision, and to the south and to the southeast, southwest are lands that are in the unincorporated portion of Rutherford County. And those properties on the other side of Northwest Broad Street are primarily used, there's an industrial quarry use across the street, there's a variety of commercial retail uses, used gar uses and vacant lots as well. The property to the north, that's adjacent to 840, is still in the Hoard family and is currently vacant. No developments proposed at this time for that. The future land use map, the Murfreesboro Comprehensive Plan indicates that urban, commercial mixed use is the most appropriate land use character for the subject property. This is a intensive character with multiplicity of uses, which includes multifamily residential as well as entertainment, restaurants, retail stores, professional offices, hotels. In addition, the comprehensive plan also identifies several different sub-development areas for this land. And one of the sub-development type is the Mixed Use Lifestyle Center, which promotes pedestrian-oriented mixed use centers with integrated complementary uses, including convention, assembly, parks, public spaces that would draw visitors from surrounding neighborhoods and communities within the region. Another sub-development type is the Mixed Use Corridor, which allows a broad range of commercial, office and high-density residential uses and public spaces serving surrounding neighborhoods, including commercial, professional, business parks and visitors from nearby communities. For these reasons, it's staff's opinion that the proposed zoning is consistent with the future land use map. As I stated in the last item, there was a neighborhood meeting that was held last night, and it was well-attended. The primary comments that came out of that meeting related to traffic, potential traffic impacts, as well as stormwater, drainage, potential for flooding due to the river, light, noise, and they also had some mention about concerns with competition with our own city park facilities. And so staff was there to help address any questions as it related to process, and the developer was there to lead that meeting and to give them information in regards to their future proposal. This, what's before you is just the zoning. It is not the proposal. It is not a planned development. It is bulk zoning. So that's what we're asking for you to schedule for a public hearing. And staff is asking for a date of February 2nd. I'd be happy to answer any questions of the Commission, and the developers are here today as well that could help answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Comments from the Planning Commission? If there are none, then we will entertain a public hearing motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we set a public hearing for February 2nd for this item.
We have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will hear updates from the Planning Director, Mr. McKnight, regarding the future land use map amendments proposed outlined for events and to schedule public hearings.
Yeah, Chair, Planning Commission, excited to stand before you guys to share that we have completed the, the planning department has completed the future land use map update. As you all know, we've been working a year and a half, less the COVID shutdown, to complete the update, and feel very comfortable that we are able to present a product before Commission and the Council that everyone will be confident in being able to use for the vision of Murfreesboro as it relates to land use. There's two opportunities today we'd like to, I'd like to share. One is, we'd like to schedule a public hearing for March 16th, would be the only on-motion thing we would need to do as it relates to approvals, and then share a couple of dates with you as it relates to next steps for the future land use map. The first date will be February the 9th. We would like to have a Planning Commission and City Council joint work session at the Murfreesboro Airport Business Center at 11:30 a.m. February the 23rd, we'd like to have a community meeting at City Hall in the rotunda where the public would be able to come in, ask questions, and we would present that future land use map to them. March 16th, of course, if the public hearing is scheduled, we'd have a public hearing, and at that point would ask for the future land use map to be adopted by the Planning Commission with a, with a motion for it to move to City Council approval, March 24th, for resolution of support and acknowledgement of the Planning Commission's action. So it's kind of a proposed schedule that we've laid out so that we can keep moving forward to adoption of the future land use map update and feel pretty comfortable with the work that we've gone, that has gone in it, that it is a very valuable product for you guys to consider. So if we could schedule a public hearing, March 16th, I would ask, I'm here for any questions.
What date did you say the joint meeting would be on?
Joint meeting would be on, we will, we'll email this to you as well, but the joint meeting is proposed for February the 9th, 11:30 at the airport. That's a normal work session.
Hey Greg, I have the March 16th, is that a daytime meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKnight. We will entertain a motion for a public hearing, and then we'll discuss the other days.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So are there any issues from the current members on the, on the 9th for the work session at 11:30?
No, sir.
Okay, I think we're good there.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. And now we will have staff reports and other business. First item on staff reports is 2021 sewer allocation report from Mr. Darren.
Hey, Chairman, thank you for the opportunity again to come before you this afternoon. I, the last time I came up here, we kind of reviewed a more granular report involving the Salem Highway corridor. This is actually kind of a, more of a 30,000-foot view of the city's sanitary sewer condition. It's, we call it our assessment. It's the second annual report. We passed Sewer, sanitary sewer allocation ordinance in December of 19, and we did have the 2020 assessment in January of last year, and so this is kind of our second annual report. So just to remind the Planning Commission, we have assets inside the fence. We call it our WRF. It's the Water Resource Recovery Facility. We can call that our bucket. And then we have those assets outside the fence, pump stations, pipes and manholes, and that's really the, the mechanism which we convey sewer from homes to the WRF. We have a separate sewer system, so we have these pipes conveying, a separate sewer system means our storm sewer system is separate from our sanitary sewer system. We may have instances where there is some co-mingling between storm sewer and sanitary sewer, but that's not permitted. So we have pipes that convey the raw sewage. We can expand those, and it's expensive, taking consideration the Salem sewer study we just looked at for eight and a half million. And we have a treatment plant. It's very, it's expandable and expensive as well. We did expand that in 2017 for 40-plus million. The one area that we do, don't have that's not expandable is our, is our river, West Forkstones. So that assimilates the treated effluent, and there are very strict conditions that the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation places on us on how much effluent we can discharge into the, to the river. Again, we modeled around our wet weather events. When we have evaporation and evapotranspiration in the summertime, you can see that green line, our flows are much diminished. In the winter, when plants aren't growing and the sun's not shining as much, our soil gets saturated and more water gets into our sanitary sewer system just by way of groundwater and surface water runoff. So the good news is, and this was 2020, our winter to summer average was roughly 2.8 times, which equaled about 500 gallons per day per new connection. In 2021, it's only, was, was 2.3 times. And the great news is, is that we had the same amount of rain in 2021 as we did in 2020. So this really shows that we've done a, a good job with our rehabilitation and effectively fixing leaks in the sewer system. So now we have about a 420 gallon per day per new connection. As a reminder, new connection, it's an apartment, townhome, single-family home, commercial establishment, food and service establishment, or retail shop. So a pretty broad-range definition for a connection, but we just have to use it that way because we have to aggregate all of these things together and kind of play with our, the averages, the average flows. So we currently have 76,585 sewer connections, roughly 51,000 of those are residential or other, and then we have 25,600 roughly of apartments, so about a third. This is where I show our sewer rehab is paying off. You can see the years on the x-axis and the, the INI metric here is how many millions of gallons of day gets to our WRF per inch of rain. So you can see that that number is slowly, it's trending in the right way, meaning less water gets into the system as we worked on our sewer system. To look at a little 2020 versus 2021 comparison, we did have a 1,617 increase in connections. That's only 2.2%. Seems a little small to me, or, or, but that's what the math, that's what our reports, reporting We did go up 28,000 unit connect, available connections. That's almost a 60% increase. I'll show you a little, that's a little bit of a, there's something that kind of tilts that scale a little bit more than it should, and I'll show that to you here in a minute, but that's still good news that effectively we've increased our available connections by keeping the rainwater and the, the extraneous water out of the system. So a big win on our rehab programs. The 2B condition, that's where we invest. We're talking about roughly $50 million. That shows that we, with our $50 million investment, we can bump up our capacity by about 50%. Again, this is kind of the, the apartments we, we added or we factored in the 3,700 units along Salem Highway Corridor. So that's why those committed connections went up from 8,300 to roughly 12,400, and we did have a, almost a 300 apartment increase. So just again, to give you kind of the as-is condition, everything has to go through three pump stations, overall creek, our main lift station, and the Southwest Region. The Southwest Regional is really where we show, we went from last year of 12,729 connections to this year of 28,174, that we did a lot of rehab in that area. So that's where I say a lot of the, I'll show you a table here that, that, that monitoring basin 6A kind of skews the, the percentage a little misleading, a little, a little bit high on the percentage. Because we've got, as you can see here, that's a 412 and a half percent increase from 2020 to 2021. So if you take that out, that six, that 58.7%, it really changes it down to 32%, which I think is more reasonable. And instead of 28,000 new connections, we're really looking at 15,445. Just bringing that up because when you look at the data, a big portion of our increased capacity is just in that one basin, and we're not going to use all of that, I don't think. I think 6A is probably good to go. So our 2B condition, all we're acting, showing here is we would get a Northeast Regional pump station. I'll go back to that. Wrong button. That's, that's taking the orange area, the 9A, 9B, and portion of flow basin 8, directing that to a new future pump station. Again, there's a little bit of a twist there that I want to go through with you real quick. This is kind of the as-is, and again, not, not so much needing you to see the numbers, but you can kind of just look at the color coding. The red is, pink is not good. Yellow is okay. The light green is, is pretty good, and then the darker, darker green is really good. And when you add in the, the 2B condition, you can see, I'll just kind of go between the two, you can kind of see that the, the greens get better and some of the yellows go to green, and that's at a cost. This is where we show about a $47.5 million, several upgrades. And in orange, if I can bring up my pointer options here, this eight and a half million, that's the, that's the basin 11, stuff that I came and talked to you last month. So that, we have factored that into that, to that cost. Okay. Oh, I want to bring this up. Yeah, the side, nope, I highlighted it, forgot I highlighted that eight and a half million. And then the, the Northeast Regional Pump Station at 20.5 million, that number has gone up significantly based on our engineer's estimate, and it's gone up so much that we're looking at a really, the cost benefit of whether we want to do that. We've got some ideas. I'll, I'll share one of them with you here in one of the slides coming up, but that 20.5 million, we're looking at more, maybe 30 million plus. So now I'm really taking a harder look at, is it worth putting that pump station in? You know, is the juice worth the squeeze at this point? The committed, we did go back and, and looked at 30, the committed connections. So as you see that little footnote down at the bottom, we did go up pretty significantly from last year, but that's because we did factor in the 3,700 connections and the Salem Highway sewer upgrades that I talked to you about last month. And you can also see that, that those three, overall creek basin and that, and basin 11, that, that really constitutes about 72% of all the total connections. So obviously, west of the interstate is where the high-growth areas are, and that, that displays itself in how many committed connections we've got out there. So the summary, we're in really good shape this year. We're better this year than we thought we were, than we were last year. So the rehab program's paying off. We have a 49% remaining capacity compared to a 39% capacity last year. We have about 8,675 connections that are committed. We have about 8,675 connections that are committed, 30, an additional 3,700 of those, that's gets us to that 12,000 number, and the Salem Highway sewer upgrades. So investing approximately 50 million gives us another 30% increase in sewer connections. We do have the ability to handle the hydraulic flows at our, at our treatment plant, given its own upgrades, but will be marginal in meeting some of our discharge permit limits into the West Fork Stones River. We do still have several hotspots that are, that are localized constrictions, and a lot of that sewer connection capacity is centralized to the city and doesn't necessarily support extending sewer into the city's urban growth boundary. Just real quickly, this is kind of the basin maps, and again, the as-is is kind of in the left column, and the 2B is, is in the right column, and I don't necessarily need you to look at the, see the numbers, but you can see where we're going from yellow to green and from pink to green. This is overall creek. We're about to bid that project this spring. We're acquiring easements right now. It's going to be a big capacity increase for the west side of I-24. It's a good thing. This is where we show the Northeast Regional, and one of the things we're looking at right now, if you look at, I don't want to get into too much detail, but we, we have almost 2,100 connections available as-is, and there's only 163 developable acres in 6A. Same with, or 9B, I'm sorry, 9A, we have about 2,100 remaining connections, and only 212 developable acres. So those yield pretty high densities. Going to this 2B condition, where you're looking at 37 or 28 units per acre, that's not, it's not going to happen, in my opinion. So one of the ideas where we need that new capacity is going to be over here in, in 8, which is the new Cherry Lane extension that's going to connect Memorial over to 840. So we're investigating moving that Northeast Regional Pump Station to the west side of Memorial to really capture the capacity where we think we're going to need it on that new Cherry Line, Cherry Lane Corridor, and possibly just leave 9A and 9B as-is. Again, we're going into a deeper dive, but this report has opened my eyes to a lot of these things, and so it's been a very useful tool for me to determine whether or not, you know, it makes good sense to spend this much money on certain improvements we've had planned. This is MF 11. You can kind of see that in this area, we've got some, some constrictions in the system, but again, we're, and, and really, we, this is one of the few basins where we go from green to yellow, but that's really because we, we took that 3,700, we're accounting for 3,700 new connections in there. And finally, this is through the middle of town, from South Rutherford Boulevard through Main Street, up through Riverview College. Those, there's really no planned improvement, so those numbers are the same on the as-is versus the 2B. So the takeaway is, again, we're doing the overall creek pump station. It's a priority. We're expect to advertise in the spring. We are monitoring our County Farm Pump Station. It appears to have more capacity than the models indicating. Northeast Regional Pump St, Pump Station is being reviewed for cost benefit and gain capacity, and we're looking at that, maybe relocating it. Whether capacity upgrades at the WRF are critical to handle the proposed pump station upgrades, feeding it. We're continuing to work with TDEC on our NPDS permit, and we're trying to increase those permit limits so that we can do a future plant expansion. And again, this annual report should become more refined and useful year after year in highlighting those trends. And I know Mr. McKnight just talked about the future land use map and so forth, and again, one of the big goals is to integrate sewer capacity allocation with that future land use map. So I think that's big on calendar year 2022. So that's about it. Sorry if I took a little too long, but I thought you guys would be interested in seeing this, and so I'm available for questions if you have any.
Yeah. Thank you for the report. I think it's definitely opened our eyes. I mean, you showed us basically a $20 million on the northeast that could be potentially more for a growth area, so, I mean, that's, that's good to be able to see. I think the challenge now is going to be, is it something we really need on the other side? So, but yeah, that's, that's good news.
Good. Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darren.
Yes, sir.
North, Northeast is the one there on Dejarnet, right?
It's going, yeah, the idea, the, the, yeah, well, the plan was the Northeast was actually going to go up closer to our water plant, and it was going to abandon Dejarnet and abandon two pump stations on Compton. So.
Maybe just leave the.
Well, we're going to think about leaving those there and maybe rehab, that's where the cost benefit, we really need to look at, how much is it going to cost to rehabilitate those pump stations, maybe get a little more capacity out of them, and move the Northeast over to the west side of Memorial. It's still going to be expensive, right? No matter what we do, but when I saw the new price tag of the Northeast where we've got it, it caused me to pause and say, we need to look at this a little deeper. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are done.